Welcome to the City of Milpitas Planning Commission, August twenty-third, seven o'clock. Anyone on wishing to make any public comments that are no one is here, but if they were, they would. There's some cards in the back and hand them to the our secretary. Anyone online. Instructions to make public comments are in the meeting agenda. So call in meeting order, pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Owasty.
To the pride, the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Medina.
Thank you, Chair. I'll begin taking attendance, starting with Commissioner Albana.
Present.
Commissioner Owasty.
Present.
Chair Chuwan.
Present.
Vice Chair Siradella.
Present.
Commissioner Galong.
Here.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Present.
Commissioner Mosin.
Present.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Next item, conflict of interest declaration, city attorney.
Thank you, Chair. I ask the Chair and every member of the commission whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Ms. Medina, would you do go down the roll, please?
Commissioner Albana.
None.
Commissioner Owasty.
None.
Chair Chuwan.
None.
Vice Chair Siradella.
None.
Commissioner Galong.
None.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
None.
Commissioner Mosin.
None.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect no reported financial or personal conflicts. I further ask the Chair and every member of the commission to please disclose to any campaign contributions of one hundred dollars or more received within the last twelve months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or contributions received from any development project applicant for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Ms. Medina, would you go on the roll, please?
Commissioner Albana.
None.
Commissioner Owasty.
None.
Chair Chuwan.
None.
Vice Chair Siradella.
None.
Commissioner Galong.
None.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
None.
Commissioner Mosin.
None.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect no reported campaign contribution conflicts. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, city attorney. Next item, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting agenda for August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three?
Chair, I'd like to move for the approval of the agenda.
We got a motion from Commissioner Albana to have a second.
Second.
Okay, got a second from Commissioner Galong. All right, roll call vote. Commissioner Mosin.
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Galong.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Siradella.
Aye.
Chair Chuwan is aye. Agenda is approved. Next item, approval for the meeting minutes of June fourteenth. Before that, I do have one correction. Under the call to order, it says Chair Chuwan called the meeting to order at seven oh five. I was not at the meeting on at on June fourteenth, so it should say Vice Chair Siradella. Can I get a with the corrections that I just stated, can I get a motion to?
Move to approve with amendments.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Mosin. Can I get a second?
I second.
Okay, got a second from Vice Chair Siradella. Roll call vote, Commissioner Mosin.
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Galong.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Siradella.
Aye.
Chair Chuwan is aye. Meeting minutes for June fourteenth are approved with amendment stated.
Chair.
Yes.
You would have to abstain from voting for the minutes.
Thank you for the correction there. So I abstained from the voting of the June fourteenth meeting. Thank you, Ms. Medina. Next item, announcements. Planning commissioners, any announcements? Okay, no announcements. I have one. I will not be at the meeting next week, the special meeting, so I've asked Vice Chair Siradella to chair that meeting. If there's no other announcements, planning director.
Good evening, commissioners. I just have a few announcements. The planning department held a community meeting on the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. And yeah, the meeting went well. Got some feedback from the community regarding the project and provided an introduction to the deliverables that we've completed so far. And then we also have a meeting on Thursday, zoning advisory group meeting. The zoning advisory group consists of members from existing city commissions. Some of you here, so looking forward to that meeting as well. It will be one hundred percent virtual. And more information on both these meetings are available on the comprehensive zoning ordinance update project website and also additional information. Ah, I just found out that Thursday's meeting will actually be a hybrid meeting. All right, just to clarify. And then one other announcement, the September thirteenth of planning commission meeting has been canceled. So just wanted to remind everyone.
All right, thank you, planning director. And then before I move on, I also just wanted to, you know, since this is our first meeting after summer, want to welcome everybody back. Next item, public forum. Those interested are invited to address planning commission on any subject not on tonight's agenda orally via Zoom webinar. Speakers may provide their name and city of residence for recording secretary's record and comments may be limited to three minutes or less. As an item not listed on the agenda, no responses required from city staff or the planning commission and no action can be taken. Planning commission may instruct the staff to place the item on a future meeting agenda. Ms. Medina, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Chair, there are no committee members in the Zoom queue for public forum. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item, a public hearing item, item number nine dash one, line director.
This item before you is a request for a site development permit to develop a new in-ground swimming pool. Legalize the unpermitted patio deck and porch around the main residence, which is comprised of pervious paver materials and also the forty-two inch tall wrought iron fence, artificial grass and a storage shed at an existing home in the hillside. And our acting senior planner, Avery Stark, is here to give the presentation.
Thank you, planning director. Welcome, Mr. Stark.
Good evening. Thank you, planning director Lee. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. Again, my name is Avery Stark. I'm an acting senior planner here with the City of Milpitas. And as stated, the item before you is a request for a site development permit at six forty Evans Road. And secretary, could you please cast my presentation? Thank you. Next. There we go. As stated by the planning director, the applicant is requesting to develop a new in-ground swimming pool. Legalize the unpermitted patio deck and porch around the main residence comprised of pervious paper materials, the forty-two inch tall wrought iron fence which surrounds the backyard area, artificial grass and a hundred and twenty square foot storage shed, which also needs to be legalized. Again, this is an existing single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. And separate from this application and pursuant to the Milpitas Municipal Code, an accessory dwelling unit, one-story guest house with a kitchen, a living area and a bedroom and one bathroom will be converted into a limited detached ADU subject to the streamlining and review and provisions of our municipal code. Project is located in a single-family hillside zoning district, and as a result, the application requires the recommendation from the planning commission and approval by the city council. Next. Here we have the project site. The arrow is indicating the primary residence. Developed is a two point nine six acre parcel located off Evans Road in the northeast portion of the city of Milpitas in the hillside area, approximately a quarter mile north of the Evans Road and Quinsley intersection. The project site is located on the east side of the crest line and about the style of the home is generally in conformance with the neighborhood. There's they're not proposing any changes to the existing single-family home or the guest house that are on the property today. And to note that the site does share a portion of its access with two adjacent lots to the south or I guess to the west from kind of where you're sitting, each developed with single-family residence. Again, we have our zoning map here indicating that the property is zoned R one H, single-family in the hillside district and the general plan designation for the project and the surrounding sites for the property are high dense, hillside, low density. Here we have just a nice overall kind of aerial image. You see the shared driveway making its way up to where it then takes off to the driveway that leads up to the main home. You have a guest house there on the bottom of your screen. The the single-family residence and the blue box on the top there indicates the location of the new pool. Now go into kind of greater detail here, talking about the pool, existing structures, what's being legalized. And then kind of more importantly, some of the development standards that apply to this project. So in an effort to limit the amount of ground to be removed, the applicant has proposed the location of this in-ground pool there, as you see in kind of an orangish-red color. It kind of the flattest portion of the site, it kind of sits on a bit of a berm right behind the back of the house there, which will result in a minimal hundred and seventy cubic yards of export for the construction of the pool. And no existing trees or landscape will be altered on the site a result as a result of this proposed pool. The applicant also requests legalization for the unpermitted patio deck, which was converted into pervious pavers. On your screen, you see it as number six on the back side of the house and then at six there in the front of the house where it will adjoin the pool. And then the new, an existing forty-two inch tall wrought iron fence, which is kind of outlined there in a dark green that surrounds and encloses the back portion of the property. Artificial grass and then hundred and twenty foot square foot shed up on the top right. The fence deviation in construction, the fence does deviate slightly from the hillside provisions, which would normally require the material to be all wooden and the surrounding framework and posts also be wooden. In this case, the fence does conform to the height. It also conforms to the required seventy-five percent open transparency. And as a part of this application, the applicant is requesting a deviation to allow the wrought iron fence in replace of a wooden fence so that it can more appropriately enclose their rear yard for children or dogs or animals of that nature. And in addition to that. Go ahead, actually to the next slide. So here we have the development standards for this site. And kind of summarized here again, that everything regarding the existing house, there is no change. There's no additional square footage, no new bedrooms or anything of that nature. It is a parcel that is less than three acres, which allows for the smallest amount of maximum size main residence and the least amount of impervious surface coverage compared to parcels over this threshold. So as you'll see on the table there, the impervious surface is listed limited to eight thousand square feet or ten percent, whichever is greater. In this case, the ten percent is greater, so that's the number staff uses to calculate impervious surface. And the project will conform to all the other development standards and its maximum limitation to the approved variance, which we'll kind of talk about a little bit more. And this is being accomplished by a condition of approval that will limit the impervious surface coverage to the approved sixteen thousand three hundred and one square feet as set by variance number five hundred and three. And we're going to outline that a little bit further in detail in the next slide. So just as a reminder, then table three of your staff report outlines the consistency with all the other applicable development standards within the R one H zone with the exception of the impervious surface, which we'll talk about now. All right, so this table is meant to kind of highlight the items within the sites with a number item on the left there indicating the number on the plan set. The title is helping to indicate exactly what portion of the house we're talking about, total square foot area. So just so you know, that is a number in square feet. And then on the right, we're just indicating, is it impervious area or pervious? And to help understand that the impervious area would be things like the concrete pad, things that are non-permeable where water or rain is not going to make it from the sky to the ground. Pervious materials can be in a variety of different things. In this case, it's the existing gravel driveway, which leads to the guest house. So it's a design which allows a substantial amount of rain to make it from sky to earth while creating a permeable effect. And also the pavers that are proposed are also permeable in nature, which allow for the passage of water through the stones, through the crushed gravel below them to again make it to the ground through not impervious in this case. So originally, the planning commission approved this variance five oh three in August of ninety-six to increase the maximum impervious surface lot coverage to six out sixteen thousand three hundred and one square feet. This is based on the parcel's unique shared access driveway that crosses it, mainly counting against the parcel's impervious surface for which this primary residence sits on. Well, the two adjacent parcels bear very, very little amount of that required impervious surface on their lot. And so it's in a way, it was encumbered by this requirement of the shared access. And then as such, the planning commission approved the hardship and allowed the development of the hundred or the one thousand twenty square foot guest house, which established that the site would exceed the maximum impervious surface area by three thousand four hundred and seven. So again, the existing home and its existing configuration would have conformed if it wasn't for the fact that this irregular scenario that has two shared lots benefit greatly from this one lot bearing the brunt of the pervious, sorry, the impervious driveway. And that was kind of the basis for why planning commission in ninety-six made the approval to to exceed the impervious amount. So today, we're not asking for an additional increase over that impervious amount. As planned, you and and as we'll talk about here, it does indicate there is an excess, but what will address that is a condition of approval that prior to the dismissal of a building permit, the applicant will convert some portion of the pervious driveway into pervious pavers or other portions of the property that can be converted to keep the maximum number and maximum square footage of impervious area within the limit of the variance. So we're not, they're not seeking an increase to the variance or an increase to the total square footage of impervious surface, but to kind of do a little swap during the building permit. And so kind of we'll talk about that again. So again, the the current application with the pool, the legalizing of the existing shed, the AC concrete pad needing to add a little asphalt for the radius of the fire truck turn to gain access up the hill does create an increase of one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine square feet of impervious coverage. Again, the pool, existing storage shed. And that will be kind of satisfied through a conditional of approval, which is the last condition that planning is issued to this permit number twenty-four, which will require again, the applicant to upon dismissal of their building permit, rectify that difference and present to us a plan that swaps the some amount of impervious surface for pervious. So that will be my responsibility as I do the building plan check to make sure that that change is in place. And again, it could be accomplished by converting driveway. It could be accomplished by removing portions of the shed. It could be accomplished in maybe other ways if the owner felt so, but the easiest and most reasonable would be to convert some of the driveway, which they have agreed to do as a part of this application and the condition of approval. Next. Due to the subjects, the the property location, it's also required to comply with the development standards in our hillside combining district. On the screen above you are a few of them kind of summarized to help the planning commission make its decision. Again, staff has reviewed the project and all of its components and can determine that it is consistent with the hillside architectural guidelines as demonstrated in table four of your staff report. Really based on the existing location and minimal scale of the home and consideration of the maximal allowable size. Then developing a new in-ground pool and the site improvements will not substantially interfere with the views and the privacies of the adjoining lots or of from the valley floor up into the hillside. And as proposed, the design, the pool is carefully sit cited kind of to be built into that flattest portion of the plateau, that kind of the berm at the back of the house. If you were to go to Google Earth, you'd actually see very much so where you've got a natural berm and they'd be, they're filling it with a pool. Next slide. So staff has confirmed that the project meets the findings associated with a site development permit as outlined in our municipal code. The existing homes architectural design, site planning and aesthetics are compatible with the neighboring homes. It emphasizes minimal changes to the natural topography and minimal visual impacts as an existing a single-family residence incorporates earth tones and is not to draw any attention from the valley floor in that way. And as described within the staff report, the development of an in-ground pool and the related improvements will be conditioned to conform to the R one H residential hillside zoning district standards for setbacks, height requirements and landscaping resolutions. The project is also consistent with the Milpitas general plan, particularly policy C D seven dash five, which states that new development in the hillside should be limited to only very low residential density, open space and park use. We have an existing single-family home. It's not increasing that amount, so it is meeting that standard. And the project site is a legal lot with an approved single-family residence. And again, the proposed home is designed to fit within the natural topography and features of the hillside. And those findings have been discussed in greater detail in the staff report and are addressed in the resolution. The project is categorically exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA in accordance with SEQA guidelines, section fifteen three oh three, a new construction or conversion of a small structure. As the scope of work includes new in-ground swimming pool, patio fence, deck and associated earthwork in the residential zone. And as a separate and independent basis, the project is also exempt from further environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section fifteen one eighty-three. And the project is consistent with a community plan, a general and zoning plan. And the project is again consistent with the established Milpitas twenty forty general plan. Here just a little information about the public notice that was placed in the Milpitas post at city hall and at a number of our other facilities. Thirty-four postcards were mailed to property owners within a three hundred foot radius of the project site. The sign was also placed on the property right aloft off Evans Road. And to date, we have received no comments via phone, email, in-person messaging or letters. Staff recommends that the planning commission open the public hearing to receive comments, close the public hearing and adopt resolution number twenty-three dash zero one five. Approving and recommending the city council approved site development permit number S D twenty dash zero one five to allow the development of a new in-ground pool, swimming, a new in-ground swimming pool and legalize the unpermitted work and site improvements in an existing single-family residence in the R one H, single-family residential hillside zoning district subject to the findings and the attached conditions of approval. This concludes my summary of the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you may have. And then we also have the applicant's engineer on Zoom if you have any particular questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. I guess first is the applicant or the engineer wish to, you know, do you have any presentations or just here to answer?
Just here to answer questions. They did not provide any presentation.
All right, thank you. Do any planning commissioners have any questions for Ms. Stark or the applicant and his engineer? If, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Albana.
Chair, yes, thank you so much. So, Mr. Stark, just so that I could be clear, it was very nice how you explained that there was a variance in what year was that, nineteen ninety-six or sixteen thousand plus three hundred and one square feet. What you're saying now is because of the new swimming pool, so the impervious would increase by about thirteen hundred. so the impervious would increase by about thirteen hundred, but they're willing to swap and do something else with pavers.
Yes.
What kind of pavers are those where it would become pervious?
So within the project plan sets, you'll see a diagram of the impervious pavers that are designed. And this is verified by our land development engineering team. And it's based on a calculation of the rate of water flow through the stone and its porous design through the gravel and into the earth. So at a particular rate, water will pass through it, which allows it to be considered pervious. Whereas like solid concrete, for example, is less porous and water runs off the top of it. You don't. You might see a little bit, you know, soak into your concrete and dry, but in this case, not enough to qualify it to be considered pervious. So the design is of the pavers that they're going to propose will be pervious in nature and confirmed by our engineering and building department.
So at the end, it's still going to be the, it will still remain within the sixteen thousand three?
Correct. It will not exceed.
And then you mentioned the patio. Is that an open patio, existing patio, open or enclosed?
So there was an existing kind of patio and deck that had been converted into this pervious paper design without the benefit of a permit, which is why it's a part of this entitlement. The patio on your screen, the behind the home, enclosed in a fence. So it's an open patio, two steps up from the driveway, and then that leads out to the AstroTurf in the rear. Thank you, Medina. And then in the front of the property, also labeled as item number six is another patio that has a bit of a ledge there that then opens up and looks down at the property. And for safety, again, accordance with building code, all the doors and exits that lead from the kind of front of the home towards the pool area will have the required security alarms on them that will chime whenever a door opens to alert someone of like the possibility of a child or an adult or anyone accidentally, or a dog, I guess, making their way into the pool. So instead of having a fence directly around the pool, the alternative in the building code is that security system.
And the patio is open, not enclosed?
The patio is open, not enclosed, correct. So it's not adding any additional building or habitable square footage to the property. As you can see on the right-hand side, that's the rear, rear view of the lot. So again, nothing is enclosed.
And the wrought iron fence is within the required?
It is within the required height, within the height of fifty-four, fifty-two inches, within the required seventy-five percent open transparency, which is measured on a kind of height and then by six-foot section. The only deviation that they're requesting is to allow the continuance of the existing wrought iron fence, which in the hillside district would require that staff bring a minor site development permit in front of the Planning Commission for approval if it was to be not wood design. So everything about the fence does comply, other than the material used.
Thank you, Mr. Stark, for the gratification. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Albana. Any other questions from any other planning commissioners? Good questions, Commissioner Albana, because those are actually the questions I was going to ask as well too. But just one thing, I just want to go back on the, if you don't mind, just to clarify, the sixteen thousand three hundred and one square feet, that was approved by the Planet Commission in nineteen ninety-six. Can, would you talk a little about the history of how that was, that number came to be?
Yes. So the house originally, when it was a vacant lot before it was developed into a single-family home, is an irregular lot that it has the two lots to the south of it, creating kind of this lag lot design. It's notated in that staff report from ninety-six that it is irregular. There are only two, two total lots in the city of Milpitas that have this configuration, both of which has sought the same variance or hardship, given the irregularity of their design. When the house was originally built, there was not the, the driveways were of pervious materials. So they allowed for the natural passing of water. When the previous, the owner prior to the current owner came to the city in ninety-six to add a guest house, it was the guest house, which was one thousand and twenty square feet that they wanted to add. But because they were then also going to finish the property with pervious pavers and the recognition that their driveway also serves two other residents who on their site are allowed to develop substantially more of their parcels because they don't have the encumbrance of the pervious driveway on their site than that this homeowner bears the brunt of it. So the Planning Commission sought fit to grant the variance to allow the increase in, in a way of recognition of the unfair approach or application of that standard. So as you see that driveway there as it runs up, it does primarily burden the current owner. So Planning Commission viewed that as one where in efforts of kind of minimizing that burden to allow the increase to create the guest house, which was that additional one thousand and twenty square feet, which put it over the allowable amount, which would have been ten percent of the lot, which is roughly twelve thousand nine hundred and two point four seven square feet. So it's a whole bunch of fun math, but at the end of the day, they will not be exceeding the variance required, the variance limit that was established by Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you for thorough explanation, Mr. Stark. All right, if there's no further questions, we'll open up the public forum. Ms. Medina, is there anyone wanting to make a public comment on this item?
Chair, there are no participants in the chamber nor in the Zoom queue.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Medina. Can I get a motion to close the public forum?
Seeing none, move to close the public hearing.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Mosson. Do I have a second?
Second then.
And second from Commissioner Wasty. Roll call vote. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Oasty?
Aye.
Commissioner Gallo?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ciadella?
Aye.
Chair Chuan, as I. Motion passes. The public or the public forum is closed for this item. Okay, any final questions or deliberations from any of the commissioners? See, Commissioner Medina Ashby, you have your laund- you?
Oh.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Albana?
Question to Mr. Stark. Approximately when the applicant applied until we give at least a like an approval for this, this evening, how long did the process go?
So originally, this application was submitted to the building department for a building permit. And when the planning department reviews the building permit, we found that this project did not have the necessary entitlement as a part of it in order for us to issue an approval for the building permit. So through that process, we informed the owner of the requirement within the hillside that would state that any new construction that requires a building permit requires first a planning entitlement and approval by this body and a recommendation to the City Council in their final approval. As a result of also realizing that there were other unpermitted structures and in site improvements, we thought prudent to actually combine all of it in one application, bring everything forward to this body so that they could go forward and enjoy both their pool and their site, knowing that everything had been legalized and permitted. So in total, it did take just about two years. It's a, I would say, a rather long time. Every hillside home is different. But they do average about a year, given the complexity of our hillside and the amount of review internally, in between staff and in between departments to make sure that things like the location against any earthquake, the geotechnical reports that are being reviewed, anything that needs to be peer-reviewed by a geotechnical engineer. So there's quite a bit of front-end work to ensure that this project is feasible. So now as they go to resume their building permit process, we can sign right off on it. Yeah.
Well, we do appreciate all the efforts you've put in, the staff and everybody into it, but I'm sure they're also, you know, but they live in the property, right?
Yes, they currently live in the property. Yes.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Albana. Any other questions or deliberations? Motions?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Albana, can we please put the, Ms. Medina, can you put the the screen with the recommendations?
So I move that we recommend that we approve and adopt Resolution number twenty-three dash zero one five, approving and recommending the City Council approve the site development permit number S D twenty dash zero one five to allow the development of a new in-ground swimming pool and legalize the unpermitted site improvements at an existing single-family residence in the R one H, single-family residential hillside zoning district, subject to the findings and attached conditions of approval.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Albana. Do I have a second? Okay, got a second from Commissioner Mosson. Roll call vote. Commissioner Mosson?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Oasty?
Aye.
Commissioner Gallo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gallo, could you?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ciadella?
Aye.
Chair Chuan, as I. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Stark, and thank you to the applicant as well. Congratulations. Next item, new business, no items. I did want to go back to announcements and I wanted to, I was not at the last the June fourteenth meeting, so, but I do want to welcome our city attorney, Christopher Beach. Yeah. So welcome, welcome to the team and glad to have you on board.
Great. Thank you, Chair.
Next item. Legalese, any person agreed by any final decision of any board, commissioner, department head to the city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the City Council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within twelve calum for days of this, of the date of said decision and paying the required fee. This time limit shall be strictly enforced. Next item, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Got a motion from Commissioner Medina Ashby. Do I have a second?
Second.
And second from Vice Chair Ciadella. A roll call vote. Commissioner Mosson?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Oasty?
Aye.
Commissioner Gallo?
Aye.
Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ciadella?
Aye.
Chair Chuan, as I. Meeting's adjourned.